... And did the Plenary Committee?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to roll call, please. Commissioner Campbell.
I'm ready.
Commissioner Cardy.
Here.
Commissioners Zanstra is absent. Commissioner Gerard is absent. Commissioners Halsmewell.
Here.
Commissioner Hall.
Here.
And Chair Henley.
Here. All right, and then... Yes, I would accept that.
Okay, question for excuse them?
One second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those for yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those for no? And they are excused? Thank you. And then moving on to the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All those for yes?
Yes.
All those for no? And that is approved? And then review of the minutes from the last meeting?
Motion is approved.
One second. Thank you Kelly. All those for yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those for no? Then that is approved? And then at this time, we'd love to open the meeting to a public comments. Don't ever rush up. I think we're good for that, all right? And then moving on to old business, the cell tower ordinance. Which you have packets and maps in front of you and then there was information in the packet you received.
I can open it up just a little bit.
Yeah.
You had reviewed this at your meeting, I think in May, recommended to the city council some changes to the cell tower ordinance. In between that and coming to the city council, I kind of sensed at your last meeting that there were maybe some questions, unanswered questions and we had some internal discussion among staff and really thought that, you know, this is if there are some policy issues that are hanging out there, if there's questions that need to be answered, this is not one that we need to rush forward but then we really should bring that back to the planning commission. We had that discussion with the council, the council was very much in favor of doing that, actually destructing their agenda. And so, that's where we're at today. Andy has talked with Steve, when I say Steve is Chief Bucola. Chief Bucola has been one of the folks that's been working on it as well as Andy. And they have some notes and know, I think, what some of the issues are and I think Andy's gonna take it from here and and then we'll be ready to unfold whenever you're ready and whenever you're comfortable. The other thing that I will add is that we are in the process of removing the tower downtown or having that tower removed. As the ordinance currently stands, the removal of that tower would create sort of a hole because right now we have one mile radius requirement. And so, we're preparing for the council consideration for next Monday, a moratorium on towers for a period of time, I'm not sure what the city attorney is gonna say, but for a period of time that would give the planning commission an opportunity to go through this process and put into place what they would like to see in terms of towers. So, just wanted you to be aware that we're planning to bring a moratorium to the council as well as to for things on hold to give you an opportunity to go through this and be comfortable with it. So, with that, Andy has all the details, you're the only expert.
Yeah. I'll certainly explain this for you guys to know, back in May was the last time, but obviously anyways, it's talk about this. And so, the substance and the text of the amendment hasn't really changed much, but I think it's probably worth just re-reading again, so everyone will understand that I know that previously we just kind of put this in front of you guys and said, "Here you go." You know, there wasn't as much discussion or feedback as maybe there often is with some of these things. So, I think it's worth just kind of going over the actual amendment itself again, which is in your packets. And really, there are a few things that are important to realize as far as why they're here and what we're trying to accomplish by adding those things. So, I'm just gonna go through this amendment sort of point by point here. So, this would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance. And there is currently a section in the special man use chapter of the ordinance that has specific standards for what it refers to as commercial wireless communication towers or cell towers, basically. So, the first section here, it is a fairly simple purpose and intent statement which just explains why we're doing this, what allows us to do this and what, you know, what the point of these provisions are. And just to make sure that it's located in an appropriate location, there are certain, you know, public safety and welfare sorts of restrictions on them dealing with height, location, protecting adjacent land uses if necessary and things like that. In section two, we talked about administratively approved uses, this on top of the next page. It's important to realize that any sort of co-location of an antenna on an existing tower is something that would be approved administratively. And I believe that's required by the zoning enabling anyways. And frankly, it just makes sense if someone's just putting a tower on an existing, sorry, putting an antenna on an existing tower, there's really no sense in that. They may go through planning commission for that. Item three just details all the extra information that we would ask from somebody who is proposing to construct one of these towers. So, this would be for a brand new tower built from scratch from the ground up. We would ask in addition to all the typical site plan information, we ask for contours, land use, zoning, owner names, location addresses, all that stuff, site plan, type of thing to be offered. But also ask for the additional seven or eight items that are shown here. So, who the operator is going to be, who would determine the feasibility of co-location, the design up of all of the proposed structures including the the tower itself, also to show you guys what it would look like from some distance away. Sometimes it's sort of hard to visualize a 150-foot tower and you might show you something that looks great from a normal, but you're not thinking about what it would look like from two or four or five hundred feet away. We also would require a registered engineer certification that would withstand 85 miles per hour. How would it be dense? How many additional antenna it could accommodate? Obviously, we would encourage someone to build an antenna that could accommodate more than one antenna on it so that we don't have a whole bunch of towers going up. We just have hopefully one tower with three or four antenna on it, it would serve more residents with fewer structures. And we're also asking them to provide inventory of all the antenna in the area, which they usually do anyways, there's not a lot of them around here, there are a few, there's one going up in Virginia shortly, as we've already approved that maybe six months ago out there. And then also just what the separation distance would be from other towers that are described in the inventory, how they're constructed and things like that. So, we're just asking for a lot more information from applicants so we can be sure that any tower is needed, is a reasonable thing for them to be proposing. Usually, this stuff isn't an issue, in my experience, most applicants sort of expect this kind of process anyways and to be honest, they don't want to build these things if they don't have to. They're expensive, you know, $200,000 to construct a tower and if it's Verizon or AT&amp;T differently, they just want the service, they don't care what it's sitting on top of, they just want antenna in the air so they can serve customers. So, if they don't have to build one, usually they don't want to. And usually, when they do build one, they just turn it on themselves to somebody else anyways and they typically aren't engaged in the long-term sort of maintenance of the towers themselves. That's the third party outfit owns and leases the space to actual wireless company. Questions so far?
Can we force them into making it? No, they can't put a single antenna tower up there?
I think that would be, I would think that would be a reasonable thing to do. I think, if I recall correctly, there's a standard in here that requires them to have space for one or two other towers, I think. And that's a fairly common provision. And again, that has to be...
Towers or antennas?
Antennas on the tower, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the antenna is typically the triangular shaped thing, it sits on the tower. And so, typically, it works out to the owner of the antenna, I'm sorry, the tower, to have extra space anyways because there's revenue involved. If somebody else wants to put an antenna on an existing tower, they have to pay X number of dollars per month or per year for the ability to locate on it. So, again, typically when, based on my experience, when they're constructing a tower, they will automatically or not, they'll want to have space for additional use because financially it's a good idea. I don't, from what I understand, the expense isn't that much different whether you have some room for one or three.
For one, don't you?
Right. I guess the antennas are fairly heavy. I've never, you know, been up to one, really played with one, so I don't know. But from what I understand, they're fairly sizable or fairly heavy things. So, there are some sort of structural engineering considerations when they're designing a thing. They have to make sure that it comes down to some...
The weight.
Yeah, the weight.
The weight and everything else, yeah.
Yeah.
And who, I have questions about the wind action specifically. Who sets that 85 mile an hour? I mean, that's like standard, regular?
Yeah, I think so, and that may be, I can double check that, but I think that comes from, that's like a state FAA or, I mean, you know, that kind of guideline. There's a Michigan Aeronautics Commission or something in addition to the FAA. And I don't think about this, and I think they have some, a lot of regulation over this area. And obviously, the, again, the entity building a tower, they're gonna want to have all these approvals in place or in process before they get to this point. So, typically, what we've done in the past, if somebody proposes one, is it has a condition of approval, we just make sure they turn in all of the all the necessary approvals and permits and everything else that they've been doing.
One of the things that I have a question on, it says tall buildings, church steeples, that you could literally put one on top of. According to this, what do we consider a tall building? To me, King Mellon is a tall building, everything else in town would sort of be a tall building.
Yeah. I think it would probably depend on what the antenna is for and how high in the air they need it. Depending on where it's located, some people want their antenna 150, 200, 300 feet in the air, very tall. Others, depending on, again, just on the topography, they might, they may not need it that tall, maybe don't. They only need it to be a hundred feet tall or something like that. So, I think it would depend on the propagation maps and how much they need to serve. Would their anticipated service range be...
Because to me, it almost sounds like it's no jeopardy if we have a fall rate for safety and it's as tall as the tower of 200 feet and I put a 100-foot tower on a building that people are occupied. It just seems like it wouldn't be fit under that circumstances then. Since the tall, is what we talked about, the fall radius had to be as tall as the tower, 200 feet? So, to me, it would be kind of setting safe, if I put it on a building.
But the word wouldn't be installed on a building.
Well, according to this, I think you could.
Which, which one?
I think the antenna would go on the building itself.
Yeah, you know, I'm looking at purpose and intent when it says, creating a safety structure, water tower, school, church, steeple, tall building design is appropriate. So, in the very first section under one in that, when you look at the very first part of it.
Let's see. The first section?
The very first section, when you read this, the use of structures, water towers, schools, churches, steeple, tall building, design of structure and tower is appropriate. So, that's what I'm just bringing up, is it meant for that? And then, of course, we got our fall radius for safety and security, so just a question.
Yeah, I mean, some of these new water towers obviously make sense, I've seen that many times. I've seen, I've seen more even build towers directly up through the middle of like a high tension control antenna, which is interesting. You know, schools and church steeples, it might make sense to take those out of here since that's something that would probably be prohibited under what we have now.
Well, I'm just...
Since we don't allow that under...
I'm just wondering if our building, see if it's support of having an antenna on the roof or side? Or however, as I agree with you 100%, so I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I would be surprised if in there, without some sort of structural engineering retrofitting going on, you could just put one on top of one. Church people, for example, without having a bigger problem.
Yeah. Just want to look right.
I think they can go inside technically too. Inside.
Inside.
Yeah, possibly. You know, I mean, I haven't...
What I think they're saying here is, in order of such towers that cause a visual pollution, then they're saying, alternative to that would be a steeple, a tall building. I think it's in lieu of a tower.
Put the antenna on the building instead of...
Right.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, the, I guess, the purpose of this sentence is, like you said, to encourage want to stay right off the bat that we want, before we start looking building these things, we want to make sure that there aren't any existing tall structures, even if this antenna for a building. And usually, as part of the site plan review process, that's one of the things that we'll look at. And one of the things they have to demonstrate is that there's not another reasonable feasible location that they could put one. And it all depends on what they're building. In my experience, again, I've only experienced this with regard to building cell towers. So, like Verizon comes in and builds your typical monocle cell tower. At some point, there may be some sort of smaller or layer weight or completely different technology that might allow it to exist in other structures, I have no idea what is coming down at some point, but...
With most of your knowledge, is there anything magical about half-mile?
No, because it all depends on how many users there are on the tower. So, from what I understand, when, you know, downtown Grand Rapids or Chicago or Detroit or somewhere city where you have, you know, tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of people in a small area, the more people that are using, that are trying to connect through on a tower, the actual service rates of that tower will decrease somewhat. So, you'll need a greater density of antenna in a more populated area, rather service the high line.
And I think, and I said you'll, like New York or Chicago, those antennas are going to be on a building.
Many of them might be, yeah.
Versus original space where it's on.
Right. I mean, Grand Rapids, I see there are some that are sticking up the top of buildings. There are some towers that are built just the tower by itself, but it just, it just kind of depends. And I don't know, you know, how or why they're all there, but...
I know one of the issues that Steve has mentioned is that we're heading toward an era where the telephone companies may not be required to provide local telephone service anymore, so they could refuse to do that. So, we're really heading perhaps toward that era where everybody is using a cellphone and there just aren't no local phones anymore. And, you know, I don't know what the answer is, I don't know if it's a half-mile, if it's less or more, or how many towers we would want to allow in the city. But that's one of the considerations, I think, is that there's, the need is gonna increase. How much in the city of Lowell, I don't know if we have that information, we can hardly get it, but I don't know how much it matters.
I mean, the other thing, they would impact the city, well, obviously, we'd grow around the city. So, it's not just how many city residents we would use enough, but there would be residents in Lowell Township or Virginia Township. Where there's more growth occurring population wise, it would also be using tower that would be located within city limits. Obviously, the tower knows no boundary. You know, from a user standpoint, you can connect to one and then to the municipality, it's all they have right service.
Yeah, I did a little research and like from Cascade to Saranac and a little bit south to 96 and up a little bit. There's 38 cell towers in our general area. Or service towers, that's not they're all cell, but already seen some from service the community. I probably would have never thought that either, just by looking at, at a little bit of math. So, there is a need.
And it's a growing need. And it's gonna continue growing.
Although the other side of the equation is, do you want that to occur within the more densely populated area of the city?
Well, I...
Or lead you in one way or another?
Today was a good day, I drove the Kalamazoo and for some reason, the cell tower issue is on my mind. And I'm gonna say every half-mile, a mile on a mile, there was a cell tower, you just saw it. From Guided Towers to whatever. And, you know, apparently, there is a huge need for it. And most of them were on hillside, they really weren't a valley, and it kind of always down in the valley, to me, it would be, you know, if I was having a cell tower, I'd want to have it up on the ridges as much as possible so I can get down and get out of here too, if I was looking for one for...
So, buildings come into play? Get on top of buildings, go further?
Well, a lot of times, they need line of sight too, from this Horizon Tower to this one, I mean, a lot of it has to do with that. Especially in some of those huge microwaves you see on the towers. I don't anticipate us seeing those very big rat times with the huge microwave, but you never know. If we open it up and someone already has the money and put it in, how do we do to stop that? It's what it is.
I had a question about number seven, but I don't think you got there yet, did you Andy?
No, he doesn't, yeah. Yeah, we're on, you know, number five or so. So, at number four, once all the materials are submitted, this would be a special man use process, so we'd have a public hearing, notice and everything. Once that's, once everything that the planning commission requires is submitted, then the planning commission must add to either approve approval conditions or deny within 90 days of receipt of the application. And if you don't take any action within 90 days, that it is deemed approved. That is something that was written into the zoning zoning act a couple years ago. So, there is, there is a need to make a decision relatively quickly. I mean, that basically allows you to table it at most twice probably after you receive all the information you need. So, that's just something to be, as minds blow, we can't, you know, we can't be dragged or beat a lot of these things. And typically, again, it hasn't been an issue in my experience, but, you know, some people don't like them next to them or concerns over, well, you know, the visual concerns, the health concerns, you know, safety concerns about what falls over as long as hopefully. Those are real and they, you know, they can derail the process, but there is, there is a point where the planning commission assesses if they're now up or down, and just make a decision and move on. Number five, we've talked about this a bit already, is the no new tower shall be permitted unless the applicant demonstrates to the reasonable satisfaction of planning permission that an existing tower structure or alternative technology would not require a tower to accommodate requests. So, basically, building a brand new tower should sort of be like a last resort. You know, there's no place you can put it, there's no other technology that you can use that would accomplish the same objective. If you meet those sorts of criteria, then okay, then you can be permitted to build a tower. But this is something that we would want to prevent someone from building a tower here and then 400 feet away, you want me to build my own tower over there so I can do whatever I want. No, we don't need to have higher towers right next to each other, we can just have one. So, that's the purpose of that. Number six is the general provision, that really could send to the meat of a lot of the actual regulation. One of the changes from the current approach is that a tower would be permitted in the public facilities and industrial districts only. Currently, I believe it also allowed in suburban residential, which is primarily, you know, over along Alden Nash and then there's also some property zone, suburban residential over on the south side of Fund and, you know, eastern Main Street. But primarily, we'd be looking at properties on older facilities and industrial now. Those are the only areas where you could place one. And then we're also requiring that if you want to build a tower, you have to build a high lot, that means the minimum lot requirements for the district in which it is located. So, if you have a non-conforming lot, you know, a lot that's too small for the district or is too narrow for the district, then you couldn't have one. It's gotta be a legal lot that needs zoning that's conforming in order to have one placed there. Letter B, you have to meet setbacks, obviously, and then also, this is where we talk about the fall zone. So, no closer to any property line than the radius of the certified fall zone. And in no case less than 200 feet from any residence or 200 feet from a zoning district which does not permit commercial wireless towers as a... And so, if you want to know exactly where those areas would be, there is a map that you have tonight. This one has a sort of faded out zoning on it. So, what I did is you'll see the two towers in the city currently that are functional. There's the one on the north side of Boats Road, and then there's also the one up on Shepherd Street. The, I think the police, yeah, the existing police tower. So, what we did is I drew a half-mile buffer around that one, which is what they proposed ordinance would have for a minimum isolation radius between towers. And I also drew a 200-foot buffer around every other zone other than industrial or public facilities. So, I just highlighted every zone, the suburban residential, R1, R2, R3, manufactured home. C1, C2, C3, and everything else, and drew a 200-foot radius around it. And what's left is where you could potentially construct a tower right now. So, you could put one on the south side of town, either by the Flat River or I think that'd be just just east of the park. Or you could do, you could build one up by the schools on the south side of Foreman or the north side of Foreman for that matter, where those school properties are. And then also, you'll see the very northern tip along the river there. I don't know what that, what that property is used for up there. On the north end of Washington, you could potentially construct one up there as well. And those are the only properties left in the city once we apply those isolation radius. And I think this is okay, I mean, there are a couple already, it allows for the placement of probably two more if you locate them correctly, you know, if there's one on the very northern boundary, maybe three more actually. You know, if you put one on the school property on the north side of Foreman, you put one on the south side near the Grand River, maybe one way up on the far north little kind of flag that sticks out there. You might be able to get three more towers in the city. I'd be surprised if you saw, frankly, I'd be surprised if you saw any more towers in the near future. But you never know, and certainly with this law change, that I could certainly be wrong. But there are some places where they could go. The city owns a bunch of those properties, the school district owns a bunch of those properties, a lot of power owns some of those. So, that's kind of what's left. That would, I think, mitigate a lot of the sort of acrily concerns with people not wanting them right next to their house because you really can't be next to very many houses because of the way that the language is written and the isolation radius would be drawn. So, you know, and that's one of the things that Steve had mentioned and he sort of drew the same thing and put some sort of ideas down on the map that he provided. And I just thought it made it a little bit more easier to read version of that, but there are certainly some options. And what I've shown on this unofficial zoning map is pretty similar to what he came up with as well. A lot of his ideas are within that, or outside of that 200-foot radius that are on the rate, the rate zoning for property. So, there are plenty of places where they could go if one is proposed in the near future. Are there any questions on that or can we keep going? Okay. See, anything more than 35 feet tall must be submitted to the Michigan Aeronautics Commission FAA for review and approval. My understanding is that this approval often takes a bit. And so, what I've told applicants in the past is just, you know, get started and if it's not, if you're not done with your paperwork by the time you're here, then that would just simply be a condition of approval and then we just hold the permit until they submit all the required permits and documentation from the FAA and from the state. And then we would let go.
Could I throw a question on that? Is 35 feet, is that what's recorded in the statute?
I don't know, I have to check. I know, Steve, we do allow for buildings to be a little bit taller than that, I think. Forty or forty-five maybe. But yeah, I have to check the statute and see if there's a specific height or reason for that number. Thirty-five feet is a common number for fire purposes, obviously.
No, this is for towers and it's a threshold to determine whether or not they have to be submitted to.
Right, I don't know.
And the reason I'm asking is because I wonder if it might be, might save us some trouble in the future just to say that. Because the point here is we just want them to, if they have to go to M dot first, go to M dot first before we approve it. Maybe not necessarily publish that threshold within our ordinance. Because if it changes, if the state changes that, then we would have to amend our ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly check the.
Is she going to stay in there?
Yeah, I mean, maybe I just say, all towers shall be submitted to the Michigan Air and Water Commission FAA pursuant to whatever standards they have.
Right.
Maybe it doesn't matter what the actual number is, if they require approval, if they require approval. So, yeah, that's a good idea. I'll check that. Item D addresses the service building, requires it be architecturally compatible with buildings in the general vicinity from which it's located. Typically, they just build a fairly straightforward sort of cement building. They put a fence around it. And sometimes if the community wants them to, they'll, you know, do some landscaping and, you know, plant some bushes and stuff in front of it. Because they do typically put some fencing around it. Sometimes it was like a barbed wire tape fence, even they'll put it on the top as well. So to sort of mitigate the visual impact of that, sometimes they will place some landscaping around the building as well. Item E, all connecting wires from tower to accessory buildings, all electrical and other service wires shall be on the ground. Again, typically, that's pretty standard practice. They build the buildings that serve the things, you know, right to the base of the tower. So there's only maybe ten feet where they have to actually run the wires from the tower to the building itself. And from a visual standpoint, you're not, you can't really see very much. Item F requires a monopole tower, which is just a straight, a straight tower, not the ones that have the guide wires running. Taking up a great deal of space. Item G, as I just mentioned, the planning commission may require landscape screening of the service building and fencing. There may be areas where you feel that that's an important visual characteristic that you'd like to see, but sometimes if it's, you know, behind a bunch of, you know, in the back of the building, it's not really visible from anywhere or from any neighboring property, maybe it's not necessary. That's something that I think that you guys can just address as it comes up. There's really no strobe lights shall be allowed, except as required by the FAA or somebody else. So no, basically no lights at all unless, unless the state or the FAA makes you put lights on it. Item I, no signs shall be allowed on the antenna or tower. Except for something that's on the building that says, maybe I should specify that, that says, you know, danger, no trespassing, contact information, things like that. This is, this is designed, I think, to prevent any part of the tower from being used as some sort of advertising platform. Item J, showers shall be included by lock gate and security fencing six feet in height. And equipped with appropriate anti-climbing device. Typically, that means I'll put some sort of barbed wire on the top, which I think usually would work as anti-climbing. Item K.
And regarding, I think in our last way of discussion of whether or not those signs could actually go on the fence fabric itself, which is just on the building if the building's inside the fence.
Yeah, either one is fine. I mean, usually they put, they put that stuff on the fence and on the building, I think. But they're typically very small. I mean, you're talking, you know, eighteen by, eighteen inch by eighteen inch or some very small sign. It's not. It's not even that's particularly large or visually intrusive. So I'll specify in this language that that would be either on a sign or a building. Just so it's clear. Item K, okay, I. shall certify its intent to lease excess space on the host tower for co-located antenna of other operators. Such certification shall include a commitment to respond to requests for information from another potential shared use applicant, negotiated with faith. And to make no more than reasonable charge for shared use of the lease. Again, I think a lot of this stuff is fairly standard practice, especially since. The entity that owns the tower, like I said, usually the, whoever owns the tower is not actually Verizon or Sprint that owns the tower. Some third party, I mean, just lease the space to the tower companies anyway. So they typically apply the same. You know, financial constraints or negotiating tactics across the board to get whatever they can. I don't know what the going rate is for. Space on one of these things, but considering the upfront costs, it's.
There's all kinds of different options, anywhere from seventeen hundred a month down to four hundred, depending on.
Yeah, that's.
A lot of it has to do with population size. The more populated areas, the more you're gonna pay for that space.
I actually have one on one of the condos that I manage. They pay eighteen hundred dollars a month just to lease the space.
Yeah, and I've got one client, the township actually decided to build their own. They were approached by Verizon. They wanted to basically build a tower on township property, leased a part of the township property, they looked at the contract and decided that was fairly one-sided and they weren't a big fan of it. So they just built their own tower out of their own pocket. And then, and then over, you know, five or ten years, will make up the expense of building the thing just by charging rent to the, to the one or two or three or however many, you know, antennas will be on there. So ultimately, for them in the long term, it'll be financially a fairly prudent decision. But the upfront costs were, you know, were fairly substantial for doing something like that. Item L, notwithstanding the provision of the section, the maximum height shall be one hundred and ninety-nine feet. And at two hundred feet is when, last I knew, the FAA makes you put lights on it. And so to prevent that, commonly around one hundred ninety-nine or one hundred ninety-five feet. So that the tower is not alighted, which is usually not particularly popular with neighbors. And I've not heard any sorts of complaints about that ever before. I suppose somebody clicked over and said that they need to go to two hundred and fifty feet or something. And if they did, then I suppose I could just come to the zoning board of appeals. And if they demonstrate that it's a unique, you know. If there's unique geography and unique needs, then maybe that can be okay. But I'd be surprised if you ever needed to see anything taller than that. Onto number seven, there's just a few items left.
And I had no idea.
Oh, sorry. Jesus, I forgot. That was kind of important. For both towers shall be at least a half mile from existing towers, except for towers dedicated to essential municipal services. So that's where the half mile radius came in on the map that Steve drew. And also the one that I prepared for you guys based on that. However, if there's something the city wants to build for the city's own purposes, so if it's for police or for nine one one or DPW or whatever. You know, wireless communication, that communication is that works for the city itself, I would be exempt from that, that one half mile radius requirement.
And we are exploring the idea of a second tower on Shepherd Street. The other one tower there, no, we're exploring the idea that this language would open the door for that. And so I just want to be sure that you're aware that it is our intent to explore that.
At number seven, if this tower goes unused for twelve months, it needs to come down. Three bonds, if someone wants to build a tower, the city can require a letter of credit or a performance guarantee of some sort. So if they do abandon it, the city can take it down at the applicant's expense, not at the city's expense.
On number seven, is there a timeline for how long they have to move it?
I don't know. I mean, I guess, I don't know exactly. I would think that as long as it's done in a reasonable period of time. I don't know typically how long it would take to take one down. If it could be done in two days or if it takes a month and a half, I just honestly don't know.
What if they refuse?
Then I suppose you could cash in the letter of credit, take it down yourself.
Yeah, they're gonna do sufficient cost, let's say, for the tower. I mean, I kind of view this as the same as a building. And maybe to deal with that. And it's gonna depend on the circumstances. And you do it on a keys by key basis. The one experience we do have is the one I couldn't make. And there was such a set of circumstances there related to the fire and potential arson. You know, took a little longer than we would have wanted.
How does one determine whether a tower is more or less functional? I couldn't tell by looking at one.
Good question.
I guess if there was, if it was suspected that it was not functional, then you'd either deal with the operator. And if you couldn't find the operator, then I know there are, there are consultants and professionals out there that, you know, do the propagation maps. They look at what sorts of, yeah, what's active and figure it out. And then from the point they figured that out, I suppose would be the date that you would say, okay, this is officially starting today. We are considering this abandonment. You'd notify the property owner or the lessee or whoever it would be that they're considering this abandonment. They have twelve months to either get it operational again or take it down. Number nine, non-conforming uses. So if there's a tower that is, exists currently that does not meet requirements of the section, it can continue and can be maintained. However, if somebody. Let's see here. There's something else that's sort of other than routine maintenance. It would have to do it in accordance with provisions of the ordinance. And if somebody, you know, took a tower down and wanted to build a new one, and it's, you know, they took it down or it fell down or, you know, somehow got destroyed, got forbidden. Then it would only be able to be built so that it met the section. So if there was a height issue, which I don't think there is with either of the towers currently. But if there was, say, a two hundred and twenty foot tower that came down, it would only be able to replace it with a one hundred and ninety-nine foot tower, for example. And that's pretty much it. So it looks like there's a few changes, edits here that I can make for the next month's meeting. If you guys like, you can just come back with revised, I have to highlight some of the changes for you guys.
I just received an email from John, the one we said earlier. And he just wanted to ask again about the eighty-five miles per hour. He says, my question is, how is this number based? And is it too low? We are currently experiencing occasionally wind gusts of sixty plus miles an hour. Is eighty-five miles an hour now?
Yeah, I don't know.
I would think that's probably the squint strength of an aftershock tornado, because it's probably what it has to withstand.
I hope that storm that went through the dunes a couple weeks ago was, the winds were around eighty to ninety, they were saying, but I don't know for sure. So it's certainly possible to have winds like that. I don't know, was it a twenty? F one, I don't know, but.
Fast.
Who wakes you quick? F one tornado waves you. I am not full of that.
And that was just John's comments about that. And I received it too late to get his grammar corrections from the minutes from Leslie. Okay. Do we need to, are we ready to talk about it? We want to, please wait for the adjustments to come back?
And some adjustments still next month? Yeah, that's fine.
Seventy-three to one twelve.
Okay. All right. So then.
Go ahead.
Pretty good, right?
Yeah.
Moving on to new business, the Lowell Arts informational review. This has already been approved. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes, we put it administratively, but it's here for your information. If you have any questions, Angel, if you want this. It's pretty simple, straightforward, cycling, that was.
This is the old Hallmark, so, right?
Yes. And some, the building, the space next to it too.
And River Hollow, yeah.
All right. Any other new business? Were we gonna have a staff report?
I've got something on staff report. What's being passed around is the staple packet. I made the copy machine number at the bottom, so you have page numbers, so it's easy to refer to. The first three pages are the ordinance amendments that we've been talking about in terms of seasonal merchandise sale and construction of real estate offices. And I think that's the last version that we've looked at. And you'll recall that there was the note about peddler solicitors and transient merchants. And I wanted to spend just a couple of minutes. And my purpose here is just to get some of this information in front of you and get you thinking about this. And then maybe if you have some ideas that in your next meeting or in the future or whenever, feel free to give us that input. Still, F one tornadoes. But just to kind of remind you, we have, the city has a code of ordinances. And the entire code consists of several chapters, general provisions, administration, airport, alcohol, alcohol, if there's animal. And I'm not gonna go through them all, but there are all these chapters. There's a chapter fifteen called peddler, solicitors, and transient merchants. And then there is also, and it's actually, when you get down here, it's appendix A, is zoning ordinance. And zoning ordinance is where you spend all of your time. And if I click on the zoning ordinance, you can see the various chapters that are within that. And here we're talking about chapter four, I believe, general provisions. But there are other elements to the code of ordinances. And I guess that's why I want to make sure that's clear in your head, is that. We have this peddler solicitor section, and that's pages four. And when we talk about zoning ordinance changes, we have to be mindful of the fact that there may be other areas of the code that also talk about peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants. And that's where that note comes from, I think, is that if we're gonna make this change in the zoning ordinance, we have to be mindful that there may be some changes that would be required in those other sections. A couple of notes that I'm just gonna throw out to you as you look through this. On page five, for example, we talk about in the code of ordinances that no peddler or transient merchant shall have any exclusive right to any location in the public streets. Winawon, Lockton, Off Street. We have provisions elsewhere where we can, through action of the city manager, if it's less than, I think, eight hours or beyond eight hours, we can close a public street. But what I've often struggled with is that we don't, we haven't consolidated in this section of code of ordinances the use of public parks, private property, parking lot, perhaps any other public space. And so just know that that's one of those issues that I've had to struggle with and try to figure out how we coordinate other sections of the code of ordinances with this section and with the zoning ordinance. The other one that I'm just gonna throw out for you to think about is on page, you can barely see it, but it's page eleven. Page eleven is where we actually have a section on transient merchants. It's article four in this chapter fifteen. And one of the notes that I had is that our code of ordinances says, except if provided in section fifteen dash one twelve. And then, you know, you go down to fifteen, one, twelve. But we essentially say you can't engage in business as a transient merchant with this one exception. Perhaps, and this is a discussion with the city attorney, but we need to have some language there referring to the zoning sections of the ordinance as well. And, you know, I don't know if that's a city attorney question. But the real heart, to me, the real heart of transient merchants is Section 1512. We essentially say that you cannot be a transient merchant unless you're connected with a community event, such as a parade, a festival, a fair, farmer's market, an athletic event, or a celebration sponsored by a governmental entity or nonprofit organization. So it's limited to events. The question we've always had is, is each vendor within that event, must they get a permit? Right now, we don't do that, for example, a fair is going on right now. The way the ordinance is written, I question whether or not we need to go to every vendor with a fair and say, "You need to have a transient merchant permit." We don't do that, I'm not necessarily suggesting that we do that, in fact, I'm not suggesting that we do that, but I think we need to take a look at the way that our ordinance is crafted so that we're more clear about how we practice that. The other one is the Riverwalk Festival. We don't require every vendor that's a part of the Riverwalk Festival to obtain a permit. Farmer's Market is another one. We don't require every vendor to obtain a permit from us. So there's some discrepancy in our practice and the way that the ordinance is written. And I think we'll have to go back to at some point in time to have a policy discussion with you, but also with the city council about why do we have this provision, what is the purpose of it? And let's make sure the language is crafted in a way that it meets the intent, the intent that you have as a community. The other issue that's not addressed that I know is other communities that are looking at are food trucks. And we haven't dealt with that yet, and I think we need to deal with it at some point in time within our code of ordinances. We also haven't really defined, I haven't been able to find a definition for an event, so I don't know what an event is. But those are just, those are some of my notes. I want to zero in on this very specific one just to give you an idea of how much we really need to look at within Chapter 15 of the code of ordinances over and above some of the things that you're talking about changing within zoning ordinance. So I hope that at least gives you sort of a bird's eye view of the complexity of this issue and the number of other policy issues that really need to be sort of pushed on.
Thank you. Moving on to Commissioner remarks.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, and I would accept that. All those for yes?
Yes.
And for no? And we are adjourned at 7:53.